Hello. Pretty good, how are you stranger? It is seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a roll call to make sure that we have a court.
Beverly Hood.
Present.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Susan Lopez.
Here.
Jessica Andrade.
Here.
Dave Robinson.
Here.
Chip Roarum. Barry McCracken.
Here.
Arthur Lacks.
Here.
And Jose Barajas emailed me today and said he had to work this evening, so he will not be here. But we do have a court, for sure.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for November 15, 2022, any corrections or comments? Hearing none, we will go ahead and file them. Communications?
None unrelated to the cases, we'll cover those when we get to them.
City Council actions?
So we did have the major variance request, a 1260 East merchant for a parking variance for multifamily. That has not gone to the council yet for the appeal that they've requested. We're still trying to work out a solution with the property owner. We also had the zoning text amendment for basically repealing the existing sign regulations and creating a new sign section of the zoning code. That was approved by the city council on November 21st. And then we had a request for a map amendment by somebody we know. And that was also approved by the council on December 5th. So, there you go.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Nothing.
New business? Case PB 2022-11-1. Public hearing on the annexation of zoning to R1 of properties at 2355 South Kensington Avenue and 369 West 2000 South Road. Will the applicant for this case please come forward?
I'm going to swear all three of you in at the same time, and then before you speak, if you would state your name when you, for the court reporter, that would be great. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Thank you. Proceed.
And if you could state your name as you come to the speaker, please.
Ramon Diaz.
Ramon Diaz, thank you. Proceed.
Filomeno Rivera.
One more time, please.
Filomeno Rivera.
Thank you. And who's the primary speaker? Okay, if you could tell us about your case, please.
I bought that property. When I bought it, my intention was to fix it. And unfortunately, I couldn't get a permit because it's zoning commercial or industrial. So now... So now I cannot get a permit. I was told that the only thing that I can do in there is a chop, some storage, or something like that, a business. And that's not the reason why I bought that property for.
Did you buy, there's three parcels here, do you own all three of them, or just the corner lot, or?
I own the corner lot, he owns the house right next to it.
Is there a relationship there?
We're friends.
Commisioners? Three.
Yes, there's a small lot in back of the other gentleman's home that really can't be used for anything. So one of our suggestions was to consolidate them into one lot, yeah.
And that has been discussed with the applicant?
I don't know about the consolidated the lot part of it, but the zoning has been discussed with him, yes.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I mean, I think probably a little bit of zoning explanations, a valid thing, if you don't mind. So, right, it is in the county right now and it's zone industrial. So it's considered illegal like a form of use, right? Which means that if there's a fire, which I think there was, you can't restore it. You have to use it for what's allowed, zoned for. It was the same kind of process that we have in the city. And so, they want, he wants to restore the home. And so, to do that, he's asking to annex it into the city and to zone it residential. That's the request.
I have a question, Deb Terrell. How is it not already in the city?
That, I do not know the history of, it's, but it's not. I mean, it's clearly not.
So when we did that annexation out there, we didn't include that little spot?
No, I mean, I suspect the property owners didn't want to include it, maybe for the same reason, that everything else around there is industrial and they wanted to keep it residential. But obviously, they didn't really understand how county rules were, because it didn't work well for them.
So as an option, it would be to zone, would it be to zone industrial?
Right, so let's talk about that for a second, right? So everything around it is zoned industrial, but a lot of it's not developed yet. So it just looks like a culture when you're out there, right? Our comprehensive land map actually does show it as residential. I'm not sure I would, if I was to draw the map, I probably wouldn't have drawn it that way. I probably would have drawn it industrial, because it is surrounded by that. I completely get their desire to keep it as a home. And, you know, I don't know that there's development pressure that's going to see it develop anytime in the real near future. But I think, in my mind, long-term use of that property probably is industrial and incorporated with the other properties around it. Having said that, you know, I think there's two options. I put one option in the scope here, which was to zone it residential for now, but make it as easy as possible to zone it industrial in the future if they so choose to do that. I guess the other option would be to, to zone it industrial, but right into an annexation agreement that... That it would, you know, be allowed to be used for residential for as long as they chose to. And they probably could repair it, but then it would still be set up for industrial should it be consolidated with adjacent lots. The other reason I'm suggesting an annexation agreement is that the city doesn't have sewer service to this property right now. And I don't believe there's water service to the property right now either. I did make the applicants aware of that, and they said that they weren't looking for that, they understood that. So I think that that should be in an annexation agreement, just to clarify. Because typically, when a city annexes a property, we should be providing those kind of services to it. So, we weren't prepared to do that. So we entered an annexation agreement to do this if, if you agree that it should be annexed and zoned into the city. I did put a couple of other additional suggested conditions on this in my memo here. And that would include, just to make everybody aware that, that once you bring it into the city, you're going to have to comply with the city's codes in terms of buildings and codes, which I suspect you understood. But just to be clear. So the city will have to go out and inspect the building and make sure that everything is brought up to code appropriately. And so, yeah, there you go.
So are we, Deb Terrell, are we recommending then that it still be maintained as three parcels?
No, I'm recommending that it be two parcels, right? The corner parcel and then the two, because there's a small one that's in the back of the far southern lot, right? That doesn't make any sense, doesn't have any direct access. It's actually used as a part of his home anyway, already. I don't really know why it's three, but it should be two. So we're recommending that they consolidate those two southern ones into one parcel.
Are there two or three pens?
There are three pens right now.
Chip Roarum might have a question on making the three parcels, two parcels, the southern parcel, one parcel instead of two. Is that going to require a lot erasure and formally putting that together as a separate process?
No, they can just request that from the treasurer's office to consolidate those two, it's pretty simple. I should have pointed out, but they have, we have pictures on the screen of what the existing structures look like. And you can see on the left there, that third little small lot in the back of the one on the south end, is what we're talking about.
Arthur Lacks. Can the county not participate in that, or are they willing to participate in it?
Participate?
Would they have to go before the county as well?
To consolidate the lots? They wouldn't have any problem with that.
Barry McCracken, so it appears that as part of the house on that quote-unquote empty lot?
I don't know what the house is, but I think there is a structure that is kind of on the line, basically.
On the line, or is it tied in the line? Of the quote-unquote empty lot? What's that? Is that what it is?
Yeah, I can't really tell from this.
Deb Terrell, who is the current owner of the house that was damaged by the fire?
To my knowledge, it was not damaged by any fire. When I bought the house, there was no fire.
The fire chief told me there was a bad fire there, so that's what I was going by.
No, I believe there's another house, like maybe a thousand feet north of that house. Oh, sorry.
Something happened, because if you go by there, there's windows that are broken out and lots of other stuff that looked like you need to do some work on the structure, which I understand you can't do because of the county's rules right now. But I think you got some work to do to make that house workable, don't you?
Yes, we have to remodel the entire thing, all new electric plumbing. And those houses does have city water.
Really?
They have city water, and my house has city sewer too, I think he has septic. So...
So is your house the house on the south?
On the north side, on the north side. Yes.
Who is Michael Aeter?
I believe that was the previous owner, that shows up on the tax rolls, but you said you fairly recently purchased it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just purchased it this year, Barry McCracken again, sorry.
That was this year.
You purchased it to live in, or is it rental?
To live in.
Are both properties owner occupied?
Yes. He currently lives in there, I will be living in there when I fix it.
Any other questions from commissioners before I open up the public hearing?
Yeah, Deb Terrell. If indeed there is city water to one of the properties, could we not require that the other property be hooked up to city water?
If the city has water to one of the properties, then I think the city would be required to provide water service to... Well, first of all, it's not city water, it's Aqua Water, right?
Right.
The city doesn't actually have our own system. But, but yeah, if Aqua's got water to one of the properties, there's no reason why they can't provide water service to the other. I, I didn't see any fire hydrants, do you know where there's a fire hydrant around there?
They actually, both properties have water. Only one has sewer, city sewer, the other one has septic.
Okay. Well, on the sewer front, if the city's got sewer to the one lot, there's no problem providing sewer service to the other. The public works guys told me that there wasn't sewer within a half a mile here, so that's what I was going off of.
At this point, I'm still dwelling on the ease of returning this to industrial zoning capability. Does that, you know, these gentlemen are asking for it to be residential? In terms of, in the future, is, if you sell it, and there's another residential tenant at the time, and has a residential owner, does the ease get complicated, or is it simple that we have some way to be able to return this to industrial, should the industrial opportunity?
Well, that's why I'm suggesting putting in an annexation agreement. An annexation agreement will last for 20 years. So at least for the next 20 years, we would have an easy mechanism to make that change regardless of who owns the property, because the annexation agreement would go with the property.
So then all of us would have to move back to the property.
No, after 20 years, then the property owner could do whatever they chose to do. They could rezone it industrial, they could keep it residential. So Barry, I am looking at the air photo, blown up. It looks like the primary part of the house is on one lot, but it does look like there's like a shed or a garage or something that splits the lot line right now.
And the responsibility for that consolidation?
It does, but we'll help them.
What it boils down to is that property line there.
You guys get what we're talking about.
Right, there's this one, there's two lots here. And there really should be one, because you really can't do anything separate with this back lot. So we just want to get rid of that line, essentially. And have you one lot with your house there, and one lot with the house here.
Okay. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
While we mull over this, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience for or against this case? If so, would you would like to come forward? Any communication?
No, we did, the applicant did send us the information to show that they had published everything properly. So we're comfortable with that, but we did not get any phone calls on this. I mean, most of the land is owned by Kensington Corporation, who is just south of this thing. And they didn't provide any comments. And ComEd owns the land to the north, and they didn't comment, so...
Saying that there is none in the audience, just before against this case, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or further questions or comments?
I've got one more question, Barry McCracken. So the city taxes of annexed, that included any of the exemptions, any potential homestead exemptions or anything like that?
No, I did not. That's just the tax rate applied, the value of the property.
So homestead exemptions would be a consequence of that, right? They would be able to add the homestead exemption?
Absolutely, they could, yeah, absolutely. But it wouldn't, it would reduce this a little bit, but not much.
Except for five hundred bucks.
Two hundred bucks, probably, I'm guessing probably like $900.
Oh, all right.
Right in that ballpark, at least.
Christmas presents.
Hey, are we ready to act?
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to act, Deb Terrell. In case PB 2022-11-1, the request for an annexation into the city of Kankakee and a rezoning from county I1 light industrial to city R1 single-family residential. I would like to move that we recommend approval of this proposal. I think that it's spot-zoned right now, you know, and not in our favor. So it makes perfect sense to me, since it's surrounded by city, to bring it into the city. I would like to attach the condition, though, that it all be brought into compliance with our requirement to have city water and sewer. And I'd like to attach the findings as set forth by the planning department.
Do we have a side yet?
Second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Chip Roarum. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Jessica Andrade.
Excellent.
Yeah, on this one, probably a good idea. Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
All right, oh, Beverly Hood? Sorry.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. All right, so we will have to work with the city attorney on an annexation agreement. They'll draft it, but it might take a few weeks. I'm not sure this will be on the first meeting in January, probably is more likely for the second city council meeting in January, which would be the, the second Monday of the month, except I think that's a holiday. So it's probably the second, the, the third Tuesday of January, whatever day that is. This would go to city council, I'll, I'll stay in touch with you, but...
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next case, PB 2022-11-2, public hearing to amend an existing conditional use at 1200 North Kennedy Drive to allow U-Haul to add propane sales and additional outdoor storage units. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? If you could state, well, give him a minute.
You swear I'm going to do it, so you can probably do it under tags. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and help us.
My name is Kevin Barrett, our parking company president for U-Haul of Illinois. And we're coming before you guys today, we're requesting the ability to add propane services and additional exterior units to our facility there, here in town. And we just would like to be able to better serve the community with the things that we see that are available as needs and things that we'll be able to do for those throughout that we can help with.
Apparently, there are 65 outdoor storage units and a request for 96 additional units. What's the current, I think the same rate of the 65?
I apologize, I don't have that number sitting here with me at the moment. But we are, we are consistently filling those units, they are being utilized. I don't have, I don't have a percentage.
Ballpark there?
About 90% occupied at the moment.
Commissioners, any other, any questions, comments?
These are organizational things, how large are these units?
They vary in size, depending, these units would be between 10 by 10 to 10 by 15.
On a small size of storage?
Yeah, yeah. We also have some units that would be put into place that would be, what we call our sustainable units, that would be 7 by 23 at the highest amount, that would be about the largest area we would be able to...
Are any of them temperature controlled?
No, so these are all exterior units that we're requesting here, none of them are temperature controlled.
Will neighbors notify?
Yes, and they provide evidence of that.
So part of what we're requesting is we see that there's, there's conditions that were in place that were requested. And so we'd like to discuss those and see if we can alleviate some of the questions. And maybe I can field some of the questions that there might be as to why those things are put in place, to try and help out and give a better broad understanding of it. One of the conditions, I've kind of worked backwards here, is that the operator shall demonstrate the property will comply with the applicable laws, codes, regulations, standards, including requirements of the Kankakee Fire Department. We are 100% supported doing that, there's no issue at all. Remove the existing temporary sign Kennedy Drive right away. We have no issue with moving those out of that right away, we understand that completely. The applicant shall provide safety fencing around the propane dispenser, which should be detailed on the site plan for review by the city. On our plan that you guys have, and as you can see in the photo there, we do provide a, it's kind of hidden on the photo there, we do provide a, it's a little over a foot rise of the concrete to bring that propane tank up. And we also provide a very, very sturdy yellow ring that is, not only to bring attention for safety, but also is very, very sturdy to provide the safety of it. The dispensing itself, rather than it being exposed, which I think is what's being addressed here, with the weights and the actual dispenser being exposed, we provide a metal cabinet that we lock that into. It's very secured, very, very well maintained, so that we can have that safety protocols with that as well presented on things we want to fix.
I'm looking sideways, is there a fencing?
There's not, there's not a standard fence, no. It's raised up off the ground, the propane tank itself is encased in a yellow ring, and then the dispenser is encased in a metal box, a metal cabinet.
So you're saying that your preference is not to provide a fence around the property because of those things you just said?
Yeah.
How tall is that tank?
Tank, we've got the book with you guys, I apologize, I don't have that with me today.
I do, I don't have it with me, unfortunately, though.
Who would be dispensing the propane?
I think you're guessing 10 feet is about right, though, Chip.
We have, we have our employees there that are all propane certified, they go through a testing process to be qualified, to be able to do so with a safety program. And then our employees and staff there would be doing so.
There wouldn't be any self-serve aspect?
No, no, absolutely not.
What, who wants the propane? What's, what's the need for this?
So we, we fill propane for everything from vehicles to, to propane tanks for forklifts, to even your home barbecues, to your heaters, salamander heaters that you put in the garage, things like that. We fill all shapes and sizes. And that's one of the things that we pride ourselves on, is being open to anybody in the community that might have that need, we want to provide that service to.
And I did talk to the fire chief about this, he doesn't really have a problem with the size of tank or anything. There are some things in code requiring separation from the tank, from the building. He was going to get back to me on the distance, that's why I put this stipulation in here, comply with the fire department. If you have to move it a little bit, we'll work that out, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
How tall is this yellow ring around it?
The yellow ring itself on the ground, it's about five feet. From the ground, it's about five feet.
So that tank's all, all...
Yeah, yeah, you're going to be, because you're looking at about, like I said, about a foot and a half off the ground, foot, foot and a half off the ground from the concrete tank, or the concrete pad itself. And you've got, from the ground to the top of the yellow ring is roughly five feet. And then from there, you're looking probably below 10 feet there.
As a new landscape plan, are you presenting?
Not to my knowledge, no. And we have no issue with presenting a new landscape to provide that, that's no problem at all.
I'd like to talk about that a little bit more.
Okay.
You know, along, Henry? You're going to have, you can have a wall of, of back of storage units along Henry. I know you've got it going along the area that separates you from the apartment building. What about on the west? I couldn't quite understand from the drawings that we have.
Chip, you can see here, here's the existing ones. I want to add these here, all kind of in line, like the head of Mount. So it would be backing to Henry, he'll be kind of sighting to...
Okay, all right. You know, and my question comes up, you know, about the buffering of the property along Henry. Is the yellow boundary there that's being illuminated the recommendation for landscaping?
So, right now, if you drive along Henry, they do have some trees and some, some shrubs from the original approval. And they did install what was required initially. What we were suggesting was it really isn't anything along this edge. And that's why I was asking for some additional trees.
Okay, is there any reason that we can't reinforce that which is along Henry for the residential and commercial that's there?
It's a conditional use, you can ask for whatever you want to ask for.
I mean, that's something that, the reason this came up to me is that we had a similar circumstance where storage units were requested in a parking lot over on the east side by people living, by the people providing pool supplies and very gross shopping center. And the neighborhood was substantially concerned about the abundance of containers at that point. And, you know, were feeling as though it was important that they... that they, these screens are not there. And so, you know, in the interest of that, thinking about what we learned from that, that the idea of softening the exposure of, of the containers to the rest of the neighborhood, um, that seems to be coming back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Deb Terrell.
My greatest concern, I don't have any issues with the propane station, I don't have any issues with you expanding, um, I would like to see, you know, more landscaping and buffering done, but my biggest concern is your willingness to take away that big mess of vehicles that's up by Kennedy Drive. That is the biggest eyesore. And when you came to us initially, years ago, you requested that you be able to park one vehicle up there for advertising purposes, and we said yes to that. We did not say yes to storage units up along the landscaped drive there coming in off Kennedy, and we did not say yes to having twenty vehicles parked up there. It looks terrible, and people complain about it, nobody's happy with it. I would like to see that area kept clear of vehicles and storage units. Is that a possibility?
So at this point, the, the storage units themselves, as well as the vehicles, um, those, we don't necessarily call those parking spots as much as shunting lanes, those are, because it's a constant flow of vehicles, it's not something that sits stagnant. As far as the, the storage units themselves go, those are part of our, just like the, the vehicles are, they're part of our frontline display, they're part of how we advertise on what it is that we're able to do, and which is how we were able to, um, move to a point of benefiting to where the investment in the community made sense for us, is that we're able to advertise to the street and advertise to those around us, and say, this is something that, that we have on the inside with the outside, and that's kind of what that, that whole process does. At this point, we're not, we're not ready to, to pull everything off of there, because that's part of what we purchased the property for, was for the advertising of what it is that we have to offer there.
But don't you think that after all this time, people know it's there? And you have a great, big, huge sign out there that says U-Haul?
I, I honestly, I was, I was in a meeting earlier today where I spoke to some of the general managers from around the state, and you would be amazed at how often people come in, walk past the storage units outside, walk past the display units that we have, and say, you guys have storage here? You guys do storage? You would be amazed at how often that actually, actually happens. So we promote in every aspect, whether it's the visual, uh, you won't ever see a U-Haul storage commercial. Everything that we do is by presence and by word of mouth, and so those do that for us, it's a non-verbal salesman for us.
One concern that I have about what Deb just said was that what we agreed to when it came to us originally was what's there now. It seems to be a disconnect. What we agreed to.
Okay, and I apologize, because that was, that was before me, so I apologize, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what was said beforehand, uh, all that I have is what we, what we're working with today, so I apologize, and I'm not prepared to answer that question, um, why that is, but all we do is, is what we have, the availability for, which is to show and promote the, the services that we have.
Was that a condition?
I think we need to provide amendments of that meeting.
Well, so, I, I will comment here, the, the long white storage units that you see along the drive there were on their approved site plan, so, because I had Alderman ask me to get rid of them, and I said I can't, because they're on the approved site plan. Um, but there isn't anything on the site plan that shows the number of vehicles that they have parked up front that you were also talking about, that, I think, your comments were absolutely accurate on that.
Might that be in the minutes that need?
It would be.
Could I help you? Yes, absolutely.
Wouldn't we provide those?
Not the second, but yes.
Yeah, all right, I can't either.
Any other comments, questions?
I got a question, Barry McCracken, the, on the propane tank, do we have any regulations or anything like that? That thing is five feet, rail around it, that's got to be like...
Twenty is what I'm getting from measuring here, twenty.
Twenty?
The proof, page eleven.
Says ten feet.
Yes, that's ten feet.
Well... Hundred and twenty inches.
I'm sorry, Barry, what was the question? Is there regulations on how tall that can be?
Yeah.
It would be as tall as the building could be, and it's not going to be as tall as the building is, so. It's allowable that height.
The building.
The main U-Haul building. One other thing I want to point out, and so everybody's clear, we also recommended a condition, just to be clear, that they're going to have to get site plan approval like they have done previously. If you go out there right now, after it rains, there's water puddled all over that pad, because it's, wasn't designed, right? It was going to, had a roof over it that had drainage previously, and, and, and now it's just a concrete pad, so, uh, they're going to have to figure out some solution so that we don't get a lot of ponding, and therefore ice and those kind of things in the winter. Uh, we went through a similar discussion last time, uh, and they made some changes to the grading of the parking lot, and it works, uh, and it's fine, so we'll just have to do that again, I just want to be clear that, that you need to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
What were you working with on?
Um, we have, we haven't assigned somebody specific yet, we're working through that right now, but our construction department's working through that.
Arthur Lacks, Mike, is there a specific, in terms of a volume, amount of information about Kankakee Fire Department and in a place like theirs?
Uh, so, as I mentioned, that the issue, I, I wanted to clarify with the, with the fire department is, uh, one, I wanted to make them sure where that they were okay with having a propane tank out there, they said, yeah, that's no problem, uh, it's just a matter of keeping it a certain reasonable distance from the building, and there probably are some other fire department regulations that I'm not aware of, because I'm not an expert on this, you guys probably have dealt with it other places, but, uh, suffice it to say, the fire department didn't have any major concerns with it, other than just making sure that it complies with their life safety codes, and I'm sure you do that everywhere, so.
Yeah, we do these all over the place, we have, uh, many locations that have this exact setup, um, and so we always do everything we can to say is a hundred percent in compliance, because this is a, this is something we take very seriously.
One other thing on the landscape ordinance that I wanted to bring up, um, we may come to terms on landscaping that, you know, is going to be presented by you on the landscape part, that, that is respectful of what we're talking about, the public would stipulate. One of the things that we've had as a problem before in other sites has been the deterioration of the land, where someone may find that the plan works for dogs, and one of the problems that we've had in the past is that it doesn't get replaced. Landscape ordinance, fire standards, the recommendation about, uh, requires that it be.
Yes, it does.
So consequently, knowing that the maintenance of the landscape is your responsibility, should there be, you know, a definite plan after replacing?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions, commissioners? I'll open up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak for or against this case, if you could come forward, please?
Evening. My name is Tim Hendrickson, and I live at 1241 North Fifth Avenue in Kankakee, directly across the street from this U-Haul facility. The facility itself is nice, but ever since they've put those trailers up along the highway, or the entryway going in, we live right across the street from there, and I, you can check with the police chief, I have called almost every weekend since they put those in, because that hides that area back there where all the little car clubs, and all the other people like to hang out in there, and every weekend, during summertime, I have to call them, because they show up about eight-thirty at night, and they're, they'll turn two o'clock in the morning. Now, when we originally bought that house, and it was a Metta View Shopping Center, everything closed at nine o'clock, people were gone by nine-thirty, ten at the latest, and it was quiet. That's changed since you brought in a couple of the other businesses, especially U-Haul. Now, they do a good job of maintaining the building, but when they put those trailers and stuff up in there, and then they got all those cars and trucks sitting in there, we have problems every night. And like I say, I've called the police, and they got me, I got them on speed dial, and they send police in there, they chase them out, and then they're back, because they hide behind all those trailers and all those vehicles. So I think U-Haul did a good job for a little while, because they put a lot of trailers out there where they weren't driving around getting crazy in there, but it's just been an eyesore since they put those trailers and stuff in there, like I say, the vehicles. The building where they are now and stuff is nice, and it looks really good, they keep that well maintained, but that area out in front of Riley Auto Parts, and then those trailers and stuff like that, it's just been an eyesore and a nightmare. So I would, I, I'm opposed to them doing any more addition in there, until maybe they, like I say, clean that area out so that it's not such an eyesore, because I've lived there for over thirty years, my family's owned that house since it's been built, and it has changed a lot, to the point that we're seriously considering moving. So I just want to let you know, I'm really opposed to them doing any more expansions, putting any more trailers, and bringing in more traffic.
Would you like to respond to what he's stating in terms of police?
Would it be possible for, my general manager, the location manager, to be able to?
Yes, they would need to be sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, state your name.
Uh, Dana Starr, I'm the manager of the U-Haul Center, um, I want to speak on what he said about the cars and all that, that has nothing to do with U-Haul. I have contacted Kankakee Police about that, and those people that have been there, they were littering, throwing garbage everywhere, I would pick up all the stuff, and it got to the point where it was broken glass, the trailers were getting messed up, because they were not associated with U-Haul. I called Kankakee multiple times, said they're on my property, they need to be removed. They were parking by my trucks, I said, you guys have to get off my property. So Kankakee made it, um, officers drive through my parking lot to make sure that they were not there. So they are not a part of U-Haul. They just went there just to hang out, show off their cars, and it got to the point where it was just too much, I said, they need to get off, if they're on my property again, they're going to be, uh, for trespassing. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you could state your name, then we'll swear your name as well.
Connie Hendrickson.
Connie, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I actually have a question in regards to, I couldn't see it very well back there. Um, I do live on Kennedy Drive with my husband, um, so yes, we live right across the street, and I'm really not sure where this tank, it looks like it would be placed in the front of the building?
Right here, here's the part of the building, here's the main aisle, it'd be up there.
Okay, so that's kind of like in the thoroughfare between, I mean, there's the, I see the entrance into the, um, shopping center, so this tank would be placed basically in the front, um, towards the planet fitness building, am I?
No, it's, it's, well, you might want to describe it, but it's closer to the entrance to the U-Haul facility, and I'm sure you located it there, so it's easier for your employees to get in and out and fill up the tanks.
Okay, and my next question would be, um, if there is an explosion, what is the radius of, um, like an explosion, it would have tank this large? How does that affect?
I can't answer that one.
Unfortunately, I apologize for that, I don't have that, that number ahead of me with everything, with all the tanks.
If you could come to this microphone so that the recorder can record you.
Absolutely, um, again, I, I don't have that number in front of me as to what it is that the, the radius of a blast would be, we, I don't typically carry those with me, um, but our, our goal is always to mitigate everything we can to prevent any kind of explosion, that's always our goal. There's no, I don't have a, a set answer to it, that's part of the reason that we put it out in the middle of a lot like that, we meet the code as far as the, um, the distance from the building itself or from the streets, is so that the fire, the fire department measure that, to make sure that everything gets up to code for that, for as far as the safety aspects go.
So they're basically, this wall you're talking about, that's my firm around this, so that it's a, a crash prevention?
There's a yellow ring wrapped around it, it's very, very heavy, and it's very, very secure, um, and I, I've seen, uh, stand up to all kinds of interactions, so it's, it's definitely.
I mean, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, it's, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just got a, a text message to, again, encourage all the commissioners to use your microphone and speak directly into it like I'm doing right now, so, thank you.
Chip Roarum, I, I, I'm curious.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, just wanted to add to.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
My name is Brad Starr. I'm an, yeah, I'm an employee at U-Haul.
Okay, just one moment.
Just swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, just to add to what he had said, oh, Dan, she said, we know it's an issue with the car people, um, that's been happening for over twenty years, uh, I used to be a part of it, uh, find an empty parking lot, hang out, we didn't usually do that kind of stuff, leave trash and stuff, but, uh, the more, in my opinion, the more storage units that can be put in to take up that empty parking space, since it's not being used as a grocery store anymore, it's not filled with cars, uh, would be better, so that people don't have a place to hang out, it'll be confined with units or other things. I try to put trailers around, especially in the middle areas, so that people can't fly through the parking lot, um, try to slow traffic down, uh, because that's an issue too. But yeah, with the, the car meets and everything, like she said, the city knows about it, or not city, but the police, uh, she's gotten calls at ten o'clock at night, asking what they should do with them, so, they know it's just a matter of finding them and kicking them out every time. So, they'll just find another spot to hang out, because that's what they do.
Thank you. If you would come forward, I think the commissioner has...
I think what Brad said just said, you know, led me to understand a little bit more about the activity that was going on there, you know, it sounds like people were giving burnouts, they're having a good time, you know, and, and all with energy to that, and but at the same time, uh, certain factors is that they have this problem, I think it's yours, it sounds like it may, may not be ours, but it's definitely something that is...
Chip, microphone, sorry.
It's something that is pertinent to the location.
Absolutely.
How do we deal with that?
Take out the pavement and put in grass. I don't know, throw out ideas.
If, if I could, I think to, to Mr. Starr's point is that the more open space that you have, the more willing it's inviting to bring things more like that into place. Well, the expansion that we're talking about is going to allow us to take up some of that open space, hopefully some of that, each of our units are individually alarmed, and they have security cameras that are placed on them, it allows us to have a better view, as well as take up the additional space, so that we're not having additional, um, ongoings throughout the night. Our goal is to add as much security as possible, so that we don't invite those kind of, um, interactions with the community such as that.
Any other comments or questions from the audience regarding this case?
I would also like to add that as we add these additional units, uh, the additional income allows for us to expand not only the current operation, but also expand our personnel, to add additional positions, to add additional jobs within the community, um, as we, as we fill those units, that, that income allows us to do so, so I just want to add that to there.
How many people do you employ?
At this location, we currently have eight.
One quick question on the new units, um, there is at least a partial fence around that area right now, do you plan on have, keeping that fence and enclosing it, or what's the plan for fencing there?
At the moment, we don't have a particular plan to it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not something that's on our, at the moment.
Okay, I'm just curious, it doesn't, from our perspective, doesn't matter, I don't think, at least mine it doesn't.
I have a question, Jessica Andrade, how is the propane tank locked?
So the tank itself feeds directly to the metal cabinet.
Okay.
Uh, the metal cabinet is then locked with, we have a round disc lock that's placed onto it, uh, so it doesn't offer any kind of bolt cutters or anything like that, uh, it's a very secure round, thick disc lock that goes onto it. It's a very secure round thick disc lock that goes onto it.
The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments?
Deb Terrell, I have a comment. As I said before, I don't have any problem with the expansion or the propane service, but your unwillingness to clean up that mess up front is a big issue for me. You stated that U-Haul doesn't pay for advertising. I would rather see you pay for some advertising than make it the community's responsibility by parking all your vehicles up there. As you stated, do make people aware of everything that you offer when it's an obvious problem for the community. It looks terrible, and I completely disagree with your conjecture that if you provided more open space up there, that it would invite more people to come and park there for car club activities. They're hiding behind your stuff. They're not going to come into open space where the police can see them and everybody can see them going up on Kennedy Drive. So this is a real issue for me, and I'm not inclined to participate in approving this if you're unwilling to fix that situation.
Go ahead, if you want to respond.
Again, it's the, the idea behind those is not to, is not to make any kind of mess. Our goal is always to try and be as good a neighbors and good a meeting member as possible. We strive very hard to be able to do that. As far as what's going on with the trucks, they're, they're in the shunting lanes designed for the advertisement purposes. And I understand, you understand your unwillingness to participate in that. It's just something that allows us to better inform the community as to what it is that we have to offer.
The public hearing is closed.
How does the, Jessica Andrade, how does the other shops in the area feel about, in the U-Haul Center?
None of them have commented about the propane tank, and we sent notices or they sent notices, and none of them have contacted me, so that's all I know.
Chip Roarke, I go back to what was said during the first time that we worked with you in this facility, and what in that language pertains to this concern that Deb Terrell has. If in fact, there is a valid concern that was expressed in those minutes, I would think that we have to review it. If it is expressed in those minutes, we have to review it.
That's something that we would have to look into and see. I'm not really comfortable agreeing to an unknown at this point. It's definitely something that we would have to look into and see what it is.
So with that, I guess a question on timing. I mean, I can't, just look at the minutes this second, right? I could, if it got continued, I could. And we would have the answer to that in your next meeting, but I don't know how fast you guys want to move, so I guess I'll throw that out there.
Our preference, obviously, we want to move as fast as we can. We want to try and get everything moving. We like keeping the momentum going as we can. So we'd like to just see a resolution to it and move as quickly as possible.
So I'm guessing that there's two ways of looking at this. The request be in decline or postpone until we're able to look at those minutes.
Or thirdly, one of the things we could do is that we could hold you to a movement and say, but you haven't seen it, I don't recall, so I can understand your concern. But at the same time, when you have raised that, it gives me pause, making sure that we're staying with what we originally, with you.
But he's stating that he doesn't want to go with something that's unknown.
And I understand that. I mean, I probably would feel the same way if I were standing where he was.
So we're back to the two options.
So that we table this now.
Can you table it, or we deny it?
Well, I guess.
Or approve it, whichever.
You could approve it. I mean, our recommendation was to approve it with a bunch of conditions. He doesn't like all of those conditions, but you can still approve it with those conditions if you want to. Ultimately, it's up to the city council.
So we recommend.
Well, somebody else is going to have to do it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we recommend tabling it until we're able to view those minutes.
Who makes a motion? You can make a motion?
I think it would be best if someone else made the motion, just to be safe.
I'll make it. Talking to you, Mike.
So what could you say to motion, please?
I move that we table the motion to proceed with the additional work on this site until we have sufficient information from our previous acceptance and approval of this site to clarify the nature of what can be on Kennedy Drive.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Chip Roarke and a second by Arthur Lacks. Any questions or comments?
So this, to go back on our agenda, future.
If you approve this motion, it'll be on your January tenth planning board agenda.
And bring this out to show the applicant the information that we're asking for, and that be determining whether or not we'll go forward.
You're asking me to find the minutes right now? I mean, I probably do have them on my laptop, but it's going to take me, if I were to sit here for forty minutes, I'll find it somewhere.
I'm not saying tonight, I'm just saying at some point in time.
No, as soon as I find them, I will email them to you guys, I'll email them to the applicant, and I'll highlight the relevant sections so everybody has the information.
Okay, and still come back and make a decision. Okay.
Well, if you approve the motion.
So we have a motion on the floor, a second.
You have a question?
Commissioner Dave Robinson, could he bypass us and go straight to the city council meeting on January, the first week?
No.
You cannot?
You guys have to take an action of some sort first.
All right.
But since your meeting is January tenth, he could be on that second meeting in January still. So you're really only putting him back two weeks.
Any other questions, commissioners? Roll call.
Chip Roarke. Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
No.
Jessica Andrade.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
All right, let's continue to January tenth. And like I said, as soon as I can find the minutes, I'll get them out to everybody.
Thank you all for your time.
Next case, PB 2022-11-3, public hearing for conditional use to operate a halfway house Christian training slash sober living facility at 153 South Greenwood Avenue by Elsom Ministries' Mark Jones. Will the applicant please come forward?
One thing before we start this one, I emailed you guys, and I believe Donna said you guys could have the green cards or the information on the notification. If you could give us that, that would be great. I can absolutely make copies of it and give it back to you. Anybody that plans on testifying on this one, we're going to swear everybody in at one time. If you think you might, go ahead and raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, state your name and proceed.
My name is Mark Jones. I'm the director and founder of Victory House of Kankakee County, as well as Elsom Ministries. I just wanted to read something to share some clarity about Victory House and the ministry and what we've done and who we have been in this community. Victory House of Kankakee has been in existence since 2007, up until 2018. I'm going to say that again because it seems that before it hadn't been heard. We have been in existence since 2007, up until 2018, housing men caught in the bonds of addiction. We have been the only long-term residential Christian training center in Kankakee County ever. An eighteen-month-long program, giving people substantial time to get off of drugs, clear their system of drugs, and become part of this community again and family members. Last year, we were in the same place. We shared hard copies of signed local linkage agreements. Throughout the years, we have those who we serve, the same target population. We even shared signed hard copies of letters of support from current and former judges of collaboration work we've done in the community. Hard signed copies by local business owners, Kankakee Renting Program, Kankakee Adult Probation, receiving the M. Dwayne Deed Award in 2007, the Juneteenth Celebration Community Council Freedom Award in 2016, Options Volunteer of the Year Award in 2017, NAACP Advocacy Award in 2022, not to mention being placed on the same platform, if you will, with newcomers and those recently throwing their hats in the arena. And not to discredit them, but to put us as existent, if we've been a long existent in this community, on the same platform is just like taking a soldier out of boot camp and putting him on the same platform with a master sergeant. I didn't agree with that. But we moved on since then, and I don't want to discredit those who are trying to still do the same in this community, because the community needs help. We need it bad. All right. We need to look out for this least desirable population, not by closing our eyes and our mind to this very true Kankakee and worldwide reality. In spite of all the effort our corner attempts to bring awareness by posting the constant increase of overdosed newspaper and the placing of the H7 chairs on the courthouse lawn of overdose death during the Thanksgiving weekend, and personally, I'm sure another chair could be added there now. Last but not least, we haven't had any public incidents outside our facility. We haven't had any outside of our facility. Those things should mean something to our position that we come in tonight. That's all I have.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Two of the letters of support that we received did not reference Elsom Ministry operating a halfway house. The other letter mentioned an eighteen-month program and not a shelter. Could you clarify what the usage, or the usage?
Our usage is unique. I've heard that they are talking about because of shelters in this area. We have never been a shelter. We are an eighteen-month or longer program. There have been people who've been in the ministry for two to three years. We don't want to push anyone out if it's not necessary, because unless you've dealt with drugs, you don't know what it is to get out of them, the fight that you have to put up with. So we want to keep people with constant support in their lives as they go through day-to-day work activities within the community, being in some of the same areas that they used to get high in, and be able to have someone right beside them to make them strong to walk through that area instead of getting caught up. From getting caught up with one of their buddies they used to drink with or get high with, to pull them to the side, no, we're not doing that. See, it's all about accountability, one to another. And as the Bible says, it's iron sharper than iron, so does man sharper than man. And that's how we've operated throughout the years. We haven't had any problems, and like I said, you guys are checking, we haven't had any incidents that weren't handled in-house. And you would think that that would mean something, especially dealing with the population of people that we deal with. You know, no incidents at all. And it's not to say that something can't happen. Hell, we've seen the White House storm. Why would we expect anything not to happen anywhere else? It can happen. Something can happen, but we have not. We have been blessed tremendously, holding each other to the fire, being accountable to one another. And you know, as sheep begets sheep, they know their people, they know the spirit, they know. I can look at a person today without even knowing them and tell you if they get high or not because it's a familiar spirit. And we operate, we haven't had any problems. Some people even been in the neighborhood and never even knew we existed in that area because of how we operate. And I'm not taking no credit for it. We don't have a special appeal or anything. I want to give all glory to God. He make it happen.
Well, I applaud you for your existence from 2007 to 2018 and the work that you've done. I'm asking questions for clarification, just so that we're all on the same page in terms of whether it is an eighteen-month program and not a shelter. I haven't opened a public hearing session yet, so you did answer that question. The other question that I have is in regards to the site parking. Do you intend to provide onsite space parking?
I'm missing a question because onsite parking, it's a community, a residential area, where people who reside in the home that they live in, parking spaces, lease two vehicles in front of each property. And I thought that was, that was just normal. It wasn't a certain thing that we had to do for that.
The zoning code requires two spaces per residential unit on their property, not, not on the street. I mean, there are some on-street parking spaces, obviously, but the code requires parking on your property, and currently you don't have any.
So you're saying that every resident on Greenwood has to have a variance for parking? The rental properties as well as the homeowners?
The code requires each property to have its own onsite parking.
Okay, so parking in front of the house would be?
Not in front of the house, on the property that you own.
All right, good enough.
And there is space off the alley to do it.
All right, good enough.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Hi. How many people will you have living there?
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten?
Yeah.
How many bedrooms are in the house?
One, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Five actual bedrooms in the upstairs area, and it's two that were considered through code as bedroom because they have a step that you can get out of a window if there's a problem.
Okay.
Which are eight.
Okay.
So just for clarification on that one, the fire department does have a life safety code that they have, and we're suggesting a condition that, you know, the actual occupancy based upon fire code standards, rather than putting a number in this conditional use, is our suggestion.
All right. All right.
My other question is, as Chairman Hood was saying earlier, you know, I understand that you're a residential treatment facility, and that's for your purposes, that's, that works for you, but for zoning purposes, we have to classify it as a shelter, a group home, a rooming house, a boarding house, something like that. So I'm still a little confused about what this is. Is this a boarding house, a rooming house, a shelter, or a group home?
There is some provision, it's not in our code, right? But there's a provision in state statute that does deal with sober living facilities, which is, I think, basically what this is, right? It's a place where people come to be rehabilitated, learn to value their faith and Christianity, I believe, is what your program is set up to do, and get their life together, essentially, right? So the closest thing in our code to that is a halfway house.
A halfway house?
Yeah.
So those are the rules that we need to apply?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Has the fire protection, including sprinklers and alarm system been addressed?
So they did ask for a wa- I'll let you answer, but just, just to be clear. You did, you did, they have asked for a waiver of that. I don't believe that the city is going to waive that requirement. But they have also said, well, if you have to provide it, here we go by the residential standards. The fire department said to me, we have to go look at the building and expect it to give an answer to that question. So I don't have an answer for you on that question tonight.
So what we're suggesting then is that we add the condition that the fire chief has to sign off on this before any occupancy?
Yes.
And the number of people that can be there. And I'm not talking about a sprinkler system. I know there's 180-day waiver for that.
Right, yes, no.
But for the number of occupants.
For the other ones that we have approved, like Gift of God, the condition didn't include an occupancy number. It referred it to the standards of the fire department and life safety code, and I'm suggesting doing the same for this one.
Okay.
Can you clarify the accessory units?
Well, right, so if you drive out there, there's what looks like a converted garage in back that looks like it's got a couple of doors, like they were used for living units. And I'm not sure what your plan is for that, so you'll need to address that.
Well said, excuse me?
The, the building in back, right, off the alley, there's a, there's a structure that looks like it was a garage, and then there's a couple of doors off the side of it that looked like at one time it might have been converted to living units. Do you plan to use that, or is that just, what is that for?
Okay, I can only answer from what I know. We haven't obtained the property yet. We're waiting to go through this process. The owner did say it has remained the same since we were last there. It was a unit somebody saved in. So I don't know what it is now. He said code has checked it and so forth, so we'll just have to wait and see. I'm still waiting to hear from the fire chief as well to come through and see what all, what else needs to be done. So I have no answer to it. Owner can answer. Code should be able to answer all of those things.
I'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. If there's anyone who wants to come and speak for or use this case, if you could come forward, please state your name.
One second, I just want to get your mic on.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and Madam Chair and the planning board members. Stephen J. Hunter, 1975 East Locust, Kankakee, Illinois. I'm here to support the petitioner's request for the conditional use permit at 152. If you take a look at the agenda here, this has got 153, so it's actually, for the record, should be 152. You may recall, for those of you who have been on the planning board for some period of time, Mr. Jones at Victory House was at that location previously. I'm not sure if you guys are well aware of that. But they were there for some, some period of time, I think approximately 11 years. Additionally, that particular facility, as, as Mr. Jones has indicated, has been a highly successful rehab facility in terms of turning the lives around of those individuals who succumb to drugs and alcohol. Additionally, he also articulated, and we have specificity, I guess, signed documents, letters from former judges and people in high-ranking positions in the community. Additionally, people like Jim Rowe, who has articulated how viable and valuable this particular program has been. Additionally, I think, as he has indicated, no adverse comments or problems have been associated with the 152 South Greenwood location. We have substantial businesses in that particular area, Mr. Lax's business, as well as the grocery stores, Dwayne Dean, in which we have individuals who are dealing with drug problems there every day, early in the morning until early afternoon. I'd like to say also, and I kind of cut short, that progress has been made in terms of that particular program, meaning Victory House. And those particular individuals who support this initiative and program are also willing to articulate and help and assist. Probation Department for the county is very supportive of what they've been able to do as well, too. The clients of Victory House have been very supportive of different initiatives in the, in the community. I serve on Christmas Day Inc. Board, and they assist us. Some of the clients that Mr. Jones works with help us with our golf outing. Christmas Day Inc. in terms of nine different sites throughout the county. They have assisted us in terms of some of the initiatives we do in terms of providing meals to 1,100, 1,200 individuals throughout the county, and they've helped in some of those locations in terms of making sure that particular program is viable and positive. I would hope, based upon what has been provided in terms of the application, as well as what Mr. Jones has indicated and his history of success in terms of working with individuals who have succumbed, as I mentioned earlier, you know, to the hazards of drugs and alcohol. I, I realize that there are some questions regarding this particular matter, but those items will be addressed and be satisfactorily satisfied by Mr. Jones and the people who work with him. I'm sure that, that the fire department and code department will be pragmatic in terms of reviewing what's required, and Mr. Jones will lie with every facet. Again, you may recall, you may recall that Mr. Jones was there at 152 South Greenwood, so it's not something new or a new, new program. And, and I'm here supporting him, Sample's here supporting him, and some of you have known Mr. Jones. Sometimes he may not have control of the King's English, but his heart's in the right place, and, and he has been very successful in working with some of those individuals at the lower ranks of society. I would hope and pray that you would see fit to vote favorably for this particular petition's request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Public hearing is closed?
Well, Madam Chair, just to be clear on the record, we did receive some letters in advance of this, and these would be part of your public record, right? We have a letter from Mr. Robert Turco, who is the owner of the property, that intends to rent this to Victory House LaSalle, and they're supportive. We did have a letter from Donna Sample from the LaSalle Board, obviously supporting the project. And we had a letter from Dr. Francine Clark-Jones with Family in Focus and Salah Counseling Services, also in support of the request.
Any questions or comments?
Can I add a couple more things, right? So we did suggest several conditions for this, one of which I think we need to at least adjust. The suggested conditions were that there would be a, a house manager or assistant onsite while residents are present at the facility. All requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, Health Department, and code will be satisfied prior to occupancy. The facility may open on a temporary use basis for a maximum of 180 calendar days in the operation beyond that point will require compliance with fire code provisions, including the installation of a sprinkler and alarm system that's identical to what we put in Gift of God. The applicant shall provide and comply with an operational plan. Now, I wrote shelter care facility, that's really not appropriate. It probably should just be sober living home, which is more accurate to what they're doing. So the applicant shall provide and comply with an operational plan for the sober living home facility, which will include information relating to funding, staffing, services, programs, and scheduling. I don't have that, so we'll need to get something in writing on that, but that could be a condition if you choose to. The facility will not accept intoxicated guests. The purpose is to not have intoxicated guests, right? And the applicant will provide at least two paved parking spaces, unless a parking variance is requested and obtained. Those are suggested conditions, include them or not, but those were our recommendations.
If I could, I'd feel mentioned also that Mayor Curtis, you guys may recall on the project over at Marygrass, there was a commitment made by Mayor Curtis to allocate 60K towards a sprinkler system. We maintain that that will be transferred over to 152 South Greenwood if required by the, by the fire department.
That decision will obviously be up to the city council, but you were right, that was under discussion.
The mayor has mentioned to us that it would just go ahead. He's a working majority of council, and I have no reason to doubt the rest of the true purpose of this state.
Deb Terrell, Mr. Hunter, do you know the source of that funding?
Arba.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, have you applied for the ARBA funding?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And was it granted by the committee?
We did not receive a check. I said, "The government will perfect, because he's just stated that the mayor is a good guy."
It's my understanding that with those funds, you have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed.
I'm not reimbursed, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Deb, let me just say this, you know, and I don't want to be redundant, but I've had several conversations with the mayor, and there is more than one way to provide those, those, those funds. I understand what you're saying in terms of some of the requirements, spend the money, then you're reimbursed, but I just have to be, use my faith that, you know, what the mayor has indicated will transpire in terms of the 60K being provided via the ARBA funds.
Any other questions? If not, we're ready to what?
I'd like to move the motion in relation to case PB 2022-11-3, request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a halfway house, Christian training, sober living, to be operated by Elsamm Ministries at 152 South Greenwood Avenue. I so move that we recommend with the following conditions that were listed. One, there will be a house manager or assistant onsite while residents are present at the facility to manage operations. Two, all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, Health Department, City Kankakee Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to occupancy. Three, the facility may open on a temporary use basis for a maximum of 180 calendar days. Any operation beyond that point will require compliance with fire code provisions, including the installation of sprinkler and alarm systems. Four, the applicant shall provide and comply with, excuse me, an operational plan for the service care facility, which will include information relating to funding, staffing, services, programs, schedules, et cetera. Five, the facility will not accept intoxicated guests. And six, the applicant will provide at least two paved parking spaces unless a parking variance is requested and obtained. I so move.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Dave Robinson and a second by Arthur Lax. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question. Regarding the stipulation that no guest be admitted that isn't sober, I'm wondering why we're requiring that? That seems odd for such a situation. It seems appropriate for maybe for an overnight shelter for the homeless, but in a residential treatment program, that would require them to literally not let somebody come home if they messed up and had a drink, you know? I just, I don't like that.
Deb, I, after thinking about it and hearing the testimony, did I put a question mark next to that one, too? If you want to scratch that one, I would be fine with that.
Can we, would...
I so move to scratch item five in the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Dave Robinson and a second by Arthur Lax. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment. The facility is across the street from my business, and I have had the pleasure of having many of their tenants coming over to our facility, painting, cutting grass, moving some equipment and stuff like that. Just by calling Mr. Jones, he'll send two or three guys over and assist me in completing the, completing the project that I'm trying to do. We have also, unfortunately, served people from that facility, but the families were a part of our community, and they in turn used our facility for their needs. And it was all natural. And I can surely say that I have enjoyed the counseling of those, many of those gentlemen who've come into that facility, have come by, and we've sat down and had dialogue about life and the things that they need to be doing. I'm a very firm believer in self-discipline, and I spend a lot of time talking about that. They spent time listening. I'm going to, if you, they're listening to, paying attention, and having some discipline to say, okay, that makes sense to me. They were good neighbors. And the home that they're going in, they've done some major improvements on that facility. New windows all over, I'm not sure what they've done inside, but the owner has really improved it.
Thank you. Jessica?
I am one of those neighbors who lived down the street from them for 15 years and did not know that they exist. So they did not cause problems in the neighborhood at all. They're right, what, five, six, seven houses down from us? So I agree with Mr. Lax.
Thank you. Roll call.
Dave Robinson?
Yes.
Arthur Lax?
Yes.
Chip Rorham?
I have to stand.
Jessica Andrade?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Okay, recommended for approval, we'll take this to the next city council meeting.
Congratulations.
What's the council table that we...
January second, I believe. Isn't that a holiday, or is the second a holiday for the city? Probably, the second's probably a holiday, it's probably the third.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Something to say to Mike, can I ask a question that's a little late, Jessica?
Yeah, you're welcome.
So on the hundred and eighty-day, I wonder when the clock starts? The reason I ask that is, the city council, we approve the city council January third, but the owner isn't done with the house until, we'll say, March. So I wanted to know when the hundred and eighty-day can...
It would start when you get your occupancy permit, and so, yeah.
Discussion of potential zoning ordinance and map amendments to address non-conforming uses and structure?
All right, I don't know how long you guys want to spend on this tonight. I personally kind of tired, but just to give you a real quick thing of where we're heading with this, and this isn't for any action tonight anyway, it's just for your review, right? But we've been approving consistently a lot of variances in the residential areas, right? So I'm proposing that we think about modifying your existing R1 district to fix the setback requirements and some of those things and the lot sizes, and then potentially create a new, what I would call almost a suburban district, which is basically what you got now, for stuff that's on the periphery of the community, so that we can minimize the number of variances we're having to process on a regular basis and just give people that are legal conforming things and not have to deal with all these changes. So that's where I was headed with this. Read through it, if you've got any questions, give me a call. There's really no, I want to get done, but it doesn't have to be done immediately, so think about it, consider it, call me with questions, we'll keep working on it, but unless you want to spend more time on it tonight, that's a quick overview.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment.
Yes.
This work is an important step towards reducing the amount of disinvestment that is going on in our community. These non-conforming lots prevent people from improving small residential, you know, occupancies. By moving forward and coming up with a way to be able to do this, we can, we can give people an opportunity to step up, to be able to invest and contribute to their community way away from gentrification. This is, this is stabilization, and I hope that we can move on this quickly.
In a sort of a tangential way, I have always been concerned, too, about the number of people, I'm not sure what the current fees are to apply for a variance or a conditional use permit, but it seems to me that we're asking people to spend a lot of money to come to us begging for something hat in hand that isn't their fault.
I, I understand. That's why I want to fix the code.
Other business?
Is, is the dinner with the mayor on?
Have you talked to him?
Why don't you have dinner for everybody?
The, the mayor did suggest he wants to try to do something, but I have not heard exactly what yet, so, no, it's not scheduled at this point in time.
But there's been discussion.
We talked about it, yes.
So next meeting we'll have some definitive answer.
Tell the, tell the mayor, I was deeply disappointed.
Yes, sir, I will.
Any other business? Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you for the gifts. Madam Chairman, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Is this for Arthur or him?
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did anybody oppose that?
If you have.
That's the only one I talk to a lot of...